Everybody, we'll get started here. If you don't mind standing, Mr. Lesher is going to say the prayer and then we're going to do a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Lord, you taught us the way of peace, teaching us to turn the other cheek and instructing your disciple to put your sword back in its place. Protect us from insurrection and political violence and intimidation of all kinds that we might safely vote for our leaders in the upcoming election. Grant that those who have put themselves forward as candidates will graciously accept the outcome of the election and encourage their supporters to do the same. That a peaceful transfer of power might again take place. Show us your favor by granting us peace in our community and our nation. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so appreciate everybody being here this afternoon. We're here running a little early today at three o'clock. And then we got Maryland You're Beautiful at five thirty today. So let's start off with the agenda of November first is before us. Council's had a chance to take a look at it. Are there any additions, delegations, or corrections to the agenda? Okay, all right. Hearing none, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, next is going to be the dispersments of November first. The council's had a chance to take and review that. Is there any additions, delegations, or corrections to that? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, the first proclamation is American Education Week. Madam Secretary, could you please read that into the record? I appreciate it.
Proclamation, American Education Week, November fourteenth through the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Whereas, from its earliest beginnings, America was founded on the ideal of ministering to the individual, including its devotion to the cause of education, establishing primary schools for the dissemination of knowledge with the belief that knowledge and freedom go hand in hand. And whereas, public education has long been the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to discharge the obligations of citizenship and to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas, by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. And whereas, public education employees, custodians and teachers, bus drivers and librarians and administrators work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas, schools are an essential component to the communities they serve, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders and elected officials toward a common purpose, providing educated citizens for the world of tomorrow. And whereas, since its founding in nineteen twenty-one, the designation of American Education Week has sought to raise public awareness of the importance of education, the accomplishments and needs of public schools, and to secure the cooperation and support of the public to meet those needs. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim November fourteenth through the eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, as American Education Week in Talbot County, and urge all citizens to recognize and encourage those involved in the field of education for their invaluable contributions, given under our hands in the great seal of Talbot County this first day of November in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Dr. Papakai, is that close? Was that close?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. That's good. All right, okay. I'm trying up all night. Up all night. All night. Okay, sit down there, please.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate you coming. We'll see you tonight, too.
Yes, no problem.
We're looking forward to tonight. Yeah, so you want to tell us a little bit about it?
Yeah, well, I just want to thank you first for the proclamation. I mean, just as the proclamation stated, education, American education, has been the foundation. And I think oftentimes, it's pegged as just the academics, reading, writing, arithmetic. But we've seen through the last three years what could be done, what can be quickly done, and how we can think outside of the box, from what used to be to what can be. And I always say, it's the whole child that we teach, not just the academic side, but all aspects of the whole child. And so what's pegged now as twenty-first century learning skills, creativity, collaboration, communication, and critical thinking, that's what we do. It's always been done from the very beginning, maybe at a lesser degree. But now that we know that, now that we know more, we do more, we do better. So I appreciate that. What's going to happen across the county is that all the schools are going to do something to highlight what they're doing in their schools.
I see.
So we're excited and to showcase the work.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yes.
Mr. DeValeo?
I just really want to thank you for the superintendent updates that we received, watching you travel to the different schools and your experiences and thoughts on those. I really enjoy those, and I know the community appreciates them.
No, thank you.
So thank you.
Appreciate all the work that you're doing, as you say, not only in traditional academic subjects, but in character-forming aspects, in the self-control and self-awareness and plain old good manners that also gets conveyed through the schools when, at times, that is lacking at home. So thank you for all that good mission work there.
Ms. Price?
Well, I mean, it's a big job. It's been a while. It's been over ten years since my kids graduated from Easton High School, but I certainly appreciate everything that you all do and the different challenges that come up that are, you know, different from day to day to day. Thank you so much for everything that you do and the partnership that you have with the county and, I guess, the partnership you're going to have with the future council. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Pack?
Yes, I would echo the sentiments of my colleagues here. It's always a big part of this county's budget, which is our school budget, and to make sure that we are funding you all to the level that you need. Education over the years has, in my opinion, has kind of morphed and changed from what it was probably during the time when I was in high school, certainly. You guys have been thrust to take on a little bit more responsibility than you probably did back then. But you do so, you know, with the dignity and the professionalism that your profession calls for. So it's a great pleasure and honor to bestow this upon you guys today. I don't see any of your colleagues with you, but normally, these kind of days, you guys have wall-to-wall teachers in here. There's one thing you guys know how to, is roll out the teacher, you know. But in any way, congratulations on this week, and I hope you guys have a very successful school year.
Thank you.
Yep, and like my colleague said, congratulations. Really appreciate you bringing your career back to us and settling in with us, being you're from here. We can't thank you enough for wanting to do that. There is going to be some challenges, but we'll all make it through it. Everybody will live, you know?
Yes.
And you guide the ship, and this council and the next council will be behind you, that's for sure.
I appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we got something for you.
Wanting a motion for the proclamation?
Yep, I'm sorry. Yep, yep.
Second.
Okay, got a motion second to put the proclamation.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeValeo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right, and if you wouldn't mind, one of me up front, I'll present this to you.
That'd be great.
Gladly.
That's all. Yep.
Again, Dr. Papakai?
Yep. Take care.
I'll be shopping my tie soon.
Yeah.
Go in.
Yep.
White one.
Manager of press.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next up, just update to the airport. Mike, if you want to come up and bring your team up here?
Yeah.
Bring the crew up. Yep, that'd be great.
All right. Thank you, council. Definitely appreciate this opportunity. I figured I would take this opportunity to kind of reflect back over the last four years and what we've accomplished together as the airport management, the airport advisory board, and the county council. So before I dig into this, I definitely want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Obviously, I started in this position in two thousand and eighteen. Your council took over that fall, and I can tell you that you guys have been very supportive and given me everything that I've needed to manage the airport, so I really appreciate that. So we'll go through, here's an overview, we'll give you some meat and potatoes, and give everybody time to speak. So the big thing here is your airport businesses remain strong. We, of course, are a self-sustaining enterprise for thirty years now. Our businesses are growing and expanding. It's expanding so quickly, I didn't even have time to put all the updates in here. A new flight school was just started operation. Prey Aviation has taken over for Trident. I just talked with them this week. They're going to be bringing at least twenty students a month through the airport. They have a contract with Mesa Airlines, so flight instruction has picked up. Aircraft operations have returned to pre-pandemic levels, and our fuel sales are continuing to trend higher than they ever have. I'll be asking the next council at some point in time for additional capacity in our fuel farm, because I think that day has arrived, so something we'll be looking at in the next budget year. The runway improvement project that we've talked about for fifteen years now, we just started the design. Of course, we got that grant this year. We actually had our first design meeting today. These are going to be weekly meetings, so now we're digging down into the weeds of exactly what the new airfield's going to look like. Very exciting. We're completing all those enabling objectives. And community engagement, you know, I'm happy to say that post-COVID, your airport is re-engaging the community like we always have, Eastern Airport Day, our education program. An interesting note, we are eighty years of operation next July, two thousand twenty-three, so we will be celebrating that for sure. But the first thing we'll talk about is Eastern Airport Day. Two thousand twenty-two was a huge success. Just many of us in this room were out there, great turnout. We have the crowds estimated around five thousand people. I can tell you, we parked on every blade of grass that we had available out there. Sixty aircraft participated in total, over thirty-four flew in formation. Many of you flew in formation as well. So it was a great day. All the momentum is to continue to build that event. It really has turned into a world-class event. And, you know, we kind of, I don't say we take it for granted, because we don't, but we're just kind of used to it now. But, you know, to hear all the positive comments from people that it was their first time or something like that, we have really have something special here in Talbot County with that event. So it's, you know, we're very proud of that at the airport, and we're going to keep that, we're going to keep that going. Wanted to look back on some of the notable accomplishments since I took over and we've worked together since two thousand eighteen. Right at the top of the list, we were very resilient through the COVID pandemic, the entire county was. And of course, you know, when everything shut down in two thousand twenty, you know, the airport, we ceased operations for a while as well, you know, so our operations dropped way down, fuel dropped way down. We didn't know how that was going to impact our businesses, but we all worked together, and we were very resilient and brought the airport through a very tough time, and now we're thriving more than we ever had. The Talbot Business Center, a lot of work's been done out there since two thousand eighteen to transition the ownership over to the airport in preparation for the future safety area. It's been a lot of work keeping the building going as it's falling to pieces, you know, so, you know, we're keeping it running. It's been a bit of a business incubator, so it's been a big challenge, but we're near the finish line with that. We've worked on a huge, the navigation easements that started in two thousand seventeen, you know, that was such a huge project, but we finally, we're near the end of the road, and we have just about everything in place as far as we need for easements. Forest Conservation Act, obstruction removal program, you know, we've spent a couple million dollars in the last couple of years getting the trees out of the way for the future and current runway configuration. The wetland mitigation's always a big thing to remind people. We've created almost eleven new acres of wetlands, and we're going to be creating more wetlands for the new project. We've increased security measures like we've never had out there. Cameras on nearly every gate, a lot of the public places are under camera, new gate controls. We've renovated the terminal. We've made that transition over to digital advertising that I talked about in two thousand and eighteen. Very importantly, we've started our aviation career education program, and we're starting to get the youth involved and getting them flying and understanding that these careers exist. We've improved all of our internal processes, and something I'm also very proud of is we've developed our workforce from within. So, you know, we've promoted people from within. We have employees that come, they work at the airport, and they work their way up, and, you know, very proud of that. We have a very solid staff running that airport. And then I took a look back last week at just how much we've grown business. Now, we know, every year, we have automatic escalators, you know, in all of our deals, and, you know, rent goes up, things go up. But I went back and said, what's new? What have we added? You know, what wasn't there, you know, since two thousand nineteen? And it's quite a lot, quite frankly. We added AT&amp;T to the cell tower out there. We expanded the Bay Runner Shuttle operation. Maryland Air FBO has expanded their pilot lounge. We added Doc Rosenthal. He's an AME. He does medical exams for aviators. That's a big deal. For the longest time, you had to go across the bridge or, you know, you had to go to Salisbury. So now we have a doctor right here in Easton, and, you know, some days, he's got a dozen pilots waiting to get physicals right there in the terminal building. Huge, huge benefit for our flying community. Next-gen Flight Solutions started operation, new business, now occupying three hangars. West Air Avionics expanded their operations significantly. It's a big deal having an avionics shop on an airport. Tri-Gas and Oil has expanded their operation there with the larger propane tank. And Aerovanti has started up and now leasing two spots, about to build two new hangars. All of those things together is an annual increase of nearly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue that we didn't have in the budget back in two thousand nineteen. So, you know, there is proof right there on paper that your airport is, you know, bringing extra money into Talbot County. We are growing the business at the airport, and that's not counting existing escalators, that's not counting fuel, you know, this is just what we've put together, organic new business. And since I mentioned fuel, this was your numbers for the end of last fiscal year, so as of June thirtieth, that's what we ended up with, over a million gallons, one hundred and six million, seven hundred and fifty, or seven thousand five hundred ninety-eight. So we increased total fuel sales by thirty percent. We've never sold that much fuel in the history of the airport. We went back and looked at all of it. It was, you know, we did eight hundred and twenty thousand the year prior, and that was a big year. So I think our second busiest year was sometime around two thousand sixteen or two thousand seventeen, and this trend is continuing. We are now, I was telling the board, we literally ran out of jet fuel yesterday because we sold so much over the weekend. So we had to have some emergency tankers brought in, and we have, you know, tankers with eight thousand gallons of jet fuel coming every day this week. So, you know, we're moving about a hundred thousand gallons a month, and it's unheard of, you know, we're almost double what we would do in a pre-COVID year. So the moral of the story is, business is strong at the airport, the state of your airport is doing very well, and we are excited about the future.
That sounds great, and you got a guy right beside you here. Yeah, how you doing?
Well, let me just mention a couple things. One is that if you haven't had a chance to look at the website, Eastern Airport's website, it's really well done, and it's up to date with a lot of information about the runway program, for example, and it's just really useful for anybody who's interested in what's going on at the airport. It also dispels a lot of myths that you sometimes hear about the airport. For example, one of the myths is that this runway expansion is going to be a big expansion beyond the confines of the airport, which is not true. The runway rearrangement and extension is going to take place on existing airport property. The Black and Decker area, for example, is going to be basically green space. It's going to be a safety area, and that's the sole purpose of that property. It's not going to involve any of the extension of the runway itself. But in any event, there are many other things on the website, I think, that you'd find interesting and instructive about what's going on at the airport. And I have to say that Mike has been instrumental, and Jeff is able aid to camp.
Yeah, lots of credit for Jeff.
In making all this happen. So it's a real value to the people of Talbot County. We've got the whole board here, so.
Can you introduce, yeah, introduce?
Can you introduce some, please, if you don't mind, Jack?
Introduce everybody?
Yeah.
Yes, this is the entire airport board. Mr. Charlie Daffin, been on the board for several years. Mr. Rudy Strickland, was on the board back when it was the airport authority, so we credit Mr. Strickland for all his time.
Mr. Pete Griffin, Pete's been active with the fire department, big member of the community. I believe everybody knows Mr. Q over there.
Yeah.
When any of you guys look to come up and say anything.
That's good, that's good.
And Jack, the fact that you had to go over the extension of the airport yet again, the runway, I should say, not the airport, but the runway, let me be clear, you know, speaks to kind of what Mr. Lesher was saying in his prayer about the disinformation and misinformation, and it's almost like a cultural thing now. This runway extension has been around ten-plus years, don't Mike?
About fifteen.
Going back to Mike Henry, yeah, fifteen, fifteen-plus years? And no matter how many times you say it, you know, we're not making it any bigger, we're not going out past fifty, we're not going to take over the Crab Shack and all that kind of stuff. You still got folk that say, oh, yeah, they're going to, you know, they're taking over Walmart, you know.
Yeah, well, Jeff and I were talking this morning, Jeff Langford, because, like I said, we had our first design meeting, and as I explained it to my wife at lunchtime, it was, for me, it was like putting on the binoculars and kind of coming into focus, you know, now that we're actually fourteen months away from our first construction package. So it was really interesting. So I went and talked to Jeff, I said, one of the, what we need to do in two thousand and twenty-three is the project page on the website has got to be jam-packed with facts, because, again, we are fourteen months away from turning the Talbot County Business Center site into a construction area.
Right.
So, you know, we need to get a lot of facts out there and let people know what's really going on.
And I hate to say it, but you're going to have to probably say it a couple more times between now and that time. How are things working with you and the town regarding the training facility and the smoke mitigation?
So, you know, we got the MOU, you know, completed, or I guess the town approved their MOU, I saw, within the last month. I'm not sure where that is with the county signing of the MOU, but as far as the purpose of the MOU was to have a structure in place that would, you know, make both sides aware that they had to come to the table and communicate. So, you know, at the end of the day, a lot still has to be figured out of how that's going to work, where the rubber meets the road, what the actual communication's going to be, and what, you know, how it's going to work, but at least we have that framework that will continue the conversation.
And Airport Day was a great success. Congratulations.
Ms. Price?
Yes.
Liaison?
Well, starting, I just want to start with Airport Day, which is always a rousing success, but to see it from above, and I was in the backseat of the Placid Lassie, thinking, oh, man, I got on the airplane too late. You saw me come in here at the last minute, too. But it was the best seat in the house, because on either side of me were the people throwing the rubber chickens out, and I'm feeding them rubber chickens, and I've never seen such a sight from up there, and it was just really, really cool. I don't know if anything ever landed in the pickup truck or not, but that was, um...
I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't think it ever does. So that was very cool. Thank you for inviting council and some of the other county staff to be able to go up and do that. It was a lot of fun. And I want to thank the airport board very much. I know you have not seen a lot of me, probably in the last little bit over a year, we didn't have anything much during COVID, and then it always conflicts on the Wednesday mornings with Mako, and as Mako president, you know, I haven't been able to attend the way that I would have liked. But I am glad that in two thousand and ten, when I was elected, we didn't have an airport liaison. And with all of this stuff about the runway extension and relocation, I was like, ooh, we really need to have more information back and forth between, I mean, the quarterly updates are great, but, you know, to be able to go on a monthly basis and participate in the discussions of what you all are talking about, I think was very, very beneficial throughout the years, and hopefully, the next council, you're going to get somebody who is going to be able to attend a little more consistently than I have in the last year or so. But it's wonderful to see all you guys out there. Thank you so much for your service. It's wonderful. And, Jack, you know, since day one, you know, you and I have worked together on this, and I want to give you an extra, an extra thank you for the relationship and the friendship that we have had since the very beginning. So airport is...
We certainly appreciate all of your help, Laura, over the years.
Well, it's, I have to say, it's like, because you guys are an enterprise fund and truly the only enterprise fund that we have that really does make money, you know, the other ones, there's some other enterprise funds, and there's some, you know, things like that, but I think the public needs to be very appreciative of the fact that there are no taxpayer dollars that go into the airport, and I know I've said this several times over the years, but it's so important that any monies that you get from the Maryland Aviation or the Federal Aviation are all come from user fees, people who use airplanes and fly, is where those dollars come from, and you do a wonderful job in leveraging those grants from the user fees. And it's a wonderful, wonderful airport, and I also have to be a little bit proud that both my boys, who were Eagle Scouts, did county projects, and my younger son did the project out in the field with, and I went out there and saw those bushes. I was like, I don't know if these burning bushes are going to grow, and we did the picnic tables and all, but they look beautiful, that whole area, so I knew that that was important for my, for my boys to do projects for the county, and I'll always think about that every time I go out there. So, thank you.
Well, we thank you for all your support, Ms. Price.
Thank you, Ms. Price.
Mr. Lesher? You know, when you're in the midst of a project, sometimes it can feel like progress is glacially slow. But when you look back, and I appreciate the perspective that you provided us today, indeed, the progress has been pretty significant, and we're accomplishing a lot, so congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. DeValeo?
Mike, I just want to say how much I appreciate what you've done out there with the airport. You, just like Dr. Papakai moved away, came back, and are running one of the big operations here that employs a lot of individuals, and you've got some great programs as well for youth and getting students involved in it. I look at the airport a little differently than most. I think of it more of like our boat landings and the opportunity that it gives kayakers who want to go out on the water and see the county from the water perspective. A lot of the times, if you just ride on fifty, you're just seeing the roads and the current infrastructure. But when you get into a plane and fly from above, like we had the opportunity on Airport Day, it reminds you just how beautiful and rural this area is and how well we've maintained it. I was fortunate to grow up with some friends who were pilots, and their parents were pilots, and it's, speaking with them about Airport Day, I always ask them what their perspective is, because a lot of them fly to different airport days, and most of them, they all say the same thing, that when they go to an Airport Day at a different airport, they'll see maybe a dozen planes, twice as many cars, and maybe as many boats at their, at their Airport Day, whereas ours has really grown into, yours has really just grown into an Airport Day and an amazing world-class event, as you say. These aren't necessarily the hundred-million-dollar individuals with planes, there's a lot of them just in your regular neighborhood. And it's a wonderful hobby that I really appreciate you guys allowing to continue, because as I said, seeing Talbot County from above is a unique perspective and a really great reminder of how hard we all have worked to keep this beautiful place so rural and perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeValeo.
Airport Days. And most of them, they all say the same thing, that when they go to an Airport Day at a different airport, they'll see maybe a dozen planes, twice as many cars, and maybe as many boats at their, at their Airport Day. Whereas ours has really grown into, yours has really just grown into an Airport Day and an amazing world-class event, as you say. These aren't necessarily the hundred-million-dollar individuals with planes. There's a lot of them just in your regular neighborhood. And it's, it's a wonderful hobby that I really appreciate you guys allowing to continue. Because as I said, seeing Talbot County from above is a unique perspective and a really great reminder of how hard we all have worked to keep this beautiful place so rural and perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVio. Just like my colleague said, you've got one heck of a team, okay? And you've got one heck of a team behind you, too. We really appreciate all you guys, all the hard work. That airport means a lot to me. I grew up looking at that airport. So I'm right there, you know. So, you know, it means a lot to me. You're doing a phenomenal job, and keep up the good work. And, you know, this council and the next council is going to support you guys, just like I was telling Dr. Papkai, that, you know, you're, you're making us money now, you know, and it's, it's a great feeling. And, you know, we're definitely going to support you guys. Appreciate all your time.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
Mike, do you need a motion for us to support the letter for the airport safety?
Yeah, I was going to say that the one item that I do need to vote on is our deer cooperator. It's an annual requirement now that we send a letter to the DNR. The plan was sent over in your files. We've done this every year now, so I just need approval to send that letter to DNR again this year.
I'll make a motion that we send the letter to the DNR Wildlife Heritage Service in support of the deer mitigation.
Second?
Okay, we got a motion second to send the letter to the DNR for mitigation for deer. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
Okay, thank you, guys. Appreciate you coming today.
Thank you all.
If there's a sheep mitigation problem, call your dad.
As long as my dad's goats don't get out, we're all right.
Maybe we should throw rubber chickens from above to hit the deer, and that might knock them out.
Okay, all right. Next is the county manager report.
No report this evening.
No report, okay. All right, that's good. We do, we do wish Clay health, good health, and Lisa. Okay, so he's, he's healing up, so he's, he's both healed up, though. We'll give him another day or two, okay? Okay, public comment.
Any crickets out there?
Guys, you can come on up and say something if you want. Okay, all right, all right. Now it's, I guess we'll go to council comments. Let's start off with Ms. Price.
I'm just looking forward to the Maryland You Are Beautiful ceremony that we have in a couple of hours, and this is our last month together, so there's only one more meeting after this one.
Yep, yep.
It's closing in.
Yep. Mr. Pack?
Have no comment.
Okay.
Enjoy the beautiful weather. Remember to roll back your clocks on Saturday night.
Okay, that's good, that's good. Mr. Lesher?
We are in the midst of an election. Early voting has started. Mail-in ballots have been coming in for, for several weeks now. Talbot County is historically high in its voter turnout. We need to continue to do ourselves proud with the high rate of citizen participation that we have in our democratic processes. So whether you vote by mail-in ballot, or early voting, or in-person on Election Day, the important thing is to get out there and vote. My wife and I did so this morning. It was quick and easy. Get out there and vote.
That's great.
You gonna do it again tomorrow? Just kidding.
One person, one vote.
Mr. DeVio?
I would just like to thank the Eastern Police Department for doing a wonderful job last night of keeping the neighborhood safe. They were out in full numbers to make sure that the kids were able to trick-or-treat happily and safely, and I really appreciate that.
Yep, thank you. And like my colleague said, you know, get out and vote. It's, it's a privilege to do that, that's for sure. And this job up here is pretty hard. So, you know, me and Mr. Lesher, hopefully, will be working together again, and I hope so, because we, we do a good job up here, and we both deserve to be back. So, saying that, Mr. Lesher, you want to go ahead and?
Could I?
Yeah, sure.
Well, I just wanted, because you guys talked about voting, and one of the things is there's been public notices about what, one of the ballot questions. And I just want to give a little plug for that, and that is the raising of the council compensation, which, you know, Mr. Pack and I and Mr. DeVio will not be back. We were supportive of putting that on the ballot. And when Mr. Callahan, when you said, you know, it is a hard job up here. We, we give up a lot to do so. We're currently making about fifteen dollars an hour. So I think that the ballot question raises it to just a little over twenty, maybe twenty-three dollars an hour. It, it's a big sacrifice up here, and so that I hope that you will give strong consideration to both question A, which raises the, raises the salary, but question B, which then puts a supermajority to, to raise it from there. It's tough. You know, we had it on the ballot several years ago. It didn't pass, and the last time it was on the ballot before that, maybe it had been twenty years. So in order to ever have it move up with, you know, inflation or anything else, it requires always going back to the voters. So that's the reason that question B is there, so that a supermajority, which is, you know, four votes, which is tough, if you've watched this council getting, you know, like Mr. Pack said the other day, getting three people to agree on lunch, let alone four to agree on legislation, and put that trust, you know, in your future council. So I hope that you guys out there will give that strong consideration as you're voting. Apologize for forgetting about that, but I wanted to put a plug in for the next council.
Okay, I appreciate that. Ms. Price? Mr. Lesher?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 22nd, beginning six o'clock PM. The council will be convening an open session at four thirty PM and then adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters, as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. We are also about to adjourn into closed session, and I will ask our assistant county manager, before we move into our motion, to read that closing statement into the record.
Yes, I'm requesting to go into closed session for the following items. Under Personnel, to discuss appointments to various county boards and committees. Under Legal, for a legal update on litigation involving Talbot Integrity Project, for a legal update on litigation involving Gibson Complaint, and for update on a legal matter involving the Department of Corrections.
Second?
Got a second, or got a, got a motion and second to go into closed session. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.